I actually, I know somebody who can.
Oh, really? Well, then, we should talk then.
Okay.
He will be ninety-nine.
Okay, okay.
Oh, wow. Let's get him, let's get him soon. He made a big difference. Well, she's off, she's gonna be going to Jamaica starting her two weeks.
Really?
She'll be there for six months, but she's gonna go back. So, she's only there for a few years.
All right. What you gonna do there?
Okay, everybody is here.
All right.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Durham City County Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that the elected officials will have the final say of any issue before us tonight. If you wish to speak to an item tonight, please go to the table on my left and sign up to speak. For those who wish to speak, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak clearly into the microphone because you're being televised. Each side, those speaking in favor of an item and those speaking in opposition to an item, will have ten minutes to present for each side. The time will be divided among all persons wishing to speak. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation to the elected body is for denial. Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Alturt. Mr. Brun.
Present.
Mr. Busby.
Present.
Ms. Freeman.
Present.
Mr. Gauch.
Present.
Mr. Gibbs.
Present.
Mr. Harris.
Present.
Mr. Hornbuckle.
Present.
Ms. Hyman.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Kinschen.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Van.
Present.
Mr. Whitley.
Present.
We have a quorum fourteen to members.
Thank you. Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If, if I may suggest, it's my understanding that in our agenda item seven, the Creekside Commons case, we have a simple procedural request. It, it, and I see, just looking at the audience, it is my assumption that there are a great many people here who have come to hear that case. Would it be convenient for them and for us to go ahead and hear that procedural request and dispose of that before we do go into our regular cases in item six?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
The motion is move item seven before item six. Move item seven before item six. Are there any comments or questions? Yes?
I understand the point, although if there are a lot of people here to speak on that topic, I feel like, I mean, we do have a case in front of it and they are in front of it because, you know, they were presumably filed first or whatever. And, you know, I wouldn't want to make those applicants wait until the end of that, end of our Creekside Commons hearing. I'm assuming that the people here do want to speak on it. Does that make sense?
Actually, my motion was based upon the assumption that they wouldn't speak and that we could dispose of that matter quickly, but I could be wrong.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to move item seven before item six. Are there additional comments? If not, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand.
It's nine.
All opposed?
Motion carries nine to five.
Okay. And one additional thing under announcements, which you don't have, under new business, let's address November the eighth, which is Election Day and our meeting day. So, let the board address that. Okay? The Chair will now, excuse me, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to move the agenda as modified.
So, second? Second by Commissioner Freeman. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? The next item on the agenda is approval of it August the ninth, meeting minutes. Comments?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, my comments, and I believe perhaps Ms. Hyman's comments, were left out of the material.
Not this time.
Not this time. My comments were left out, and my only concern is, is that going forward, those comments be included in the materials that we send to the council and, and staff has assured me that those are there, even if they are not in the packet we are voting on tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm satisfied.
Okay, there. No more comments, yes?
I, I just wanted to move approval of the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a change.
Okay, it's the motion is seconded that we approve the minutes as presented, and we have a comment from Commissioner Gibbs.
Well, I, my note, re-elected should be changed to re-evaluated. It's on, well, on the first page, well, my vote. Gibbs voted for development. Entire one hundred-plus acres should be re-evaluated. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the motion, were you accepting amendment?
Yes.
While, while, while we're at it, my name is spelled wrong on the same page.
Okay, did you get that, Susan?
In the comments? Oh, yes.
Okay, would you, with the maker of the motion, I mean, his motion to include the corrections?
I move the adoption of the minutes as corrected.
I'll second, same.
Motion is seconded that the minutes be received and approved as corrected. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next item on our agenda is item number seven. Public hearing, we're open to public hearing for the zoning map change request for Creekside Commons Z one-six quadruple zero one. And we have a new staff member doing the presentation.
Yes, please bear with me. Steve Medlin with the Planning Department. I am filling in for my entire staff, which happens to be in Asheville this evening at a national, I mean, a statewide conference. Yeah, fortunately, they get to go and I don't. This case is case Z sixteen oh one, which is Creekside Commons, which is a request by NVR Ryan Holmes, Stephen Freeman, to rezone the current site from RS twenty to a PDR six-point-three zero-two. Earlier today, the staff received a request, and I think the Planning Commission received a request from the applicant to consider a thirty-day deferral of this item. Staff obviously has no issue with a deferral being granted for this case in order for the applicant to modify their development plan and to potentially work with the adjacent property owners and citizens in the area to address some of their concerns. Staff will be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this point, but we're gonna reserve our full presentation until this item potentially, this issue is decided.
Thank you. I have two people wishing to speak in favor of this item and five people wishing to speak against. Okay, the, I understand the applicant may have a motion to, for consideration.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ken Spalding. I represent the applicant in there. I was just brought into this case last week, and so was Mr. Stangiel, and we saw that there was some need to meet with the residents again, as well as some, cleaning up some issues in regard to our text, our committed elements, to clear that up with staff. I would like to reserve any further presentation unless or until we have to go further based on you all's vote. But I think it's very important for us to make sure that we have met with the residents again since we're now involved with this, and to hear them out completely and to see what, if anything, we can do to address their concerns. It's clear from some emails I've read, it's very important to them about some issues. We need to understand the issues better, and we need to be able to explain the situation better and to get as much input to make any modifications if they're, if they're gonna be possible. So, I would respectfully request that, and move that this be continued over, deferred over, for thirty days. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown.
Is, we open to discussion on this?
We have not closed the public hearing, okay? Before we bring it, before the commissioners, he's making a request, he's not making a motion. The motion will have to come from someone up here. So, he's making a request for a continuance for thirty days. Now, before I close the public hearing, there were five people from the community that signed up to speak and against. If the motion is granted, or his request is granted, they're gonna have a thirty-day continuance. In other words, it'll come back in October. We're not, if the motion is granted and moved upon, we will not make any decision on it tonight. And my question to the five people that signed up to speak and against, is there anyone that just would like to speak tonight with reference to this or waiting to October to speak after the full presentation has been made by, from both staff and the applicant? Come to the mic, please, and state your name and address. That's Michael.
Greetings. Greetings, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Mike Cutlip. I'm a resident at Nine Teahouse Court in South Durham. My only question is not to, to speak necessarily to the proposed development, but just to the possibility of thirty days not being enough time to meet with the residents in the area and address the concerns that they have. I don't know if there could be a motion for possibly sixty days.
You can request a sixty-day continuance.
I would like to request a sixty-day continuance instead of thirty days.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have two requests. We have a request from the applicant for thirty-day continuance. We have a request from the community for sixty-day continuance. So, if no one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners and hear what the commissioners, Commissioner Brown.
I, I agree with the community, based on what I've read so far from the neighbors and looking at the plan, I think sixty days is gonna be even pushing it to really get this cleaned up, if it's even possible to clean it up. So, I'm going to move that we reopen the public hearing and continue it for sixty days.
Had a motion for a continuance for sixty days. I have a second from Commissioner Miller. Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Whitley.
Yes, is it possible, who's here from Transportation?
Bill Judge.
Creekside Elementary School. In the mornings and the evenings, park, the cars are in a parking lot.
Commissioner Whitley, I'm gonna rule you out of order.
Well, let me ask my question.
Yeah, but the discussion, the motion on the floor is for a continuance. You asking about the project, you're, you're speaking to the project.
I'm wondering whether we can, I know it doesn't fit the criteria for transportation evaluation, but I'm-
You're still asking about the project and not the motion that's on the floor. The motion on the floor is whether to grant a continuance or not. You understand what I'm trying to say?
I understand, I understand, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to get some business done in the, in the sixty days.
Are there other comments, Commissioner Gauch?
Thank you, Chair Harris. My comment is that without, I, I know we all received emails and, and, you know, have read the report and all of that, but without opening the public hearing, I don't know how we can make a determination that sixty days would be required rather than thirty days. And I think the, just from a practical standpoint, if, if they are not able to resolve the, the issues in thirty days, then they would come back and ask for another continuance, which they would be able to do. So, I'm, I'm inclined to not vote for a sixty day, but to vote for a thirty-day continuance because it is possible that they would be able to meet with the neighbors and address their concerns in that amount of time, and I don't see any reason to push it out sixty days if they can do it in thirty.
Thank you. Commissioner Freeman?
Can I ask a question of the representative that was speaking?
Is it speaking to the motion?
Yes.
Or is it speaking to the project?
Specifically to the motion.
Okay.
Is it, I just want to know if you think the property owner or whoever is working on this project would be amenable to sixty days rather than the thirty days?
It doesn't matter whether he's amenable or not, if we say sixty, it's sixty.
I, I just spoke with the developer, and he, he truly feels we can get it done in thirty days, but that's, that's it. Do you want to, may he just respond to that person?
Yeah, my name is Britt Spivey, and I work with NVR, the applicant. The only reason I think we, that thirty days is reasonable is the, there's actually been a meeting with the homeowners already that took place, and actually, some of the text commitments came from that meeting. We also have people here in support of the project too, that would rather see it happen sooner than, than later, so I'm willing to act as quickly as possible with West and Downs to have a second meeting.
Do you have meeting dates already lined up?
I do not.
Okay.
No.
So, I think that the sixty days might probably work better than?
If thirty days does not work, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, the motion on the floor. Commissioner Johnson?
I'm just curious to the, the resident who requested the sixty days, could he provide insight as into why he doesn't feel that thirty days is enough time? Like, what, why is this?
Let me, let me do that. They have to have information in for the agenda two weeks prior to the meeting, so right now, from, from tonight, they would have like a week or a week and a half to get the information into staff for the October meeting. And so, it's, even if they had the meetings already lined up, it would still be tight and pushing it in order to get the material or into the staff in time enough for the October meeting. They only have about a week and a week and a half.
That's very helpful, thanks.
Any other comments?
Can I speak one more time?
Yes.
We're fine with sixty days. If that's what it takes to make the council happy and to give the neighborhood a chance to, to schedule a meeting, then we're fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the motion on the floor is for case number Z one-six quadruple zero one, to have a sixty-day continuance. To our November meeting.
Whatever day that is.
Yeah, yeah, it may not be sixty, it may be, okay, but to our November meeting. So, all those in favor of this motion, please raise their right hand. Thank you, and thank you, neighbors, for coming, and thank you for granting us this leadway. And I also thank the people from Ellis Road Townhouses for allowing us to do this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Now would be the time for me to talk about the possibilities between here and sixty days.
Okay, ma'am, you need to speak up, you're being televised.
Yeah, I want to ask the question about getting a staff on evaluation of traffic right there by Creekside Elementary School that backs up and creates a one, one lane traffic instead of two lanes.
Bill?
Bill Judge with Transportation. The only thing I can really answer is that the ordinance has very specific criteria for when we can, threshold for when we can require a traffic impact analysis. This site is currently presented as under that criteria, so there, there's no basis for us to require any additional traffic impact analysis or study. If, in conversations with the neighbors or the commissioners and ultimately the City Council, if those are concerns, then those are certainly things that the applicant can volunteer and, and provide, but, but there's no ordinance requirement for it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I came from Chappa Hill Creekside Elementary School to come here, and there's no way they can do that project without some traffic coming.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner, again, I'm gonna rule you out of order because you're speaking to something that's not even on the, on the floor right now.
I'll, I'll bring it back in sixty days.
Okay, all right. Okay, the next item is public hearing, open to public hearing for Ellis Road Townhouses A one-six quadruple zero three and Z one-six quadruple zero four.
Good evening, I'm Laura Woods with the Planning Department. I'll be presenting both cases this evening, and these cases were previously before the commission on July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. The case was deferred two cycles because the applicant proffered a new commitment at that time, so we're bringing back the cases this evening. My, my presentations will be slightly different this evening, since you've seen the full presentation before, I'm going to present a slightly abbreviated version. Hopefully, you will remember the case well enough that, if, if you do not and would prefer me to pull up the PowerPoints from July, we can certainly do that to look at the maps. Case sixteen zero zero, zero zero three, Ellis Road Townhomes, is a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan for four parcels comprising twenty-five-point-six acres, generally located in southeast Durham at two-five-one-one Ellis Road. It's directly east of the Southern Rail Corridor and north of Ellis Road. As is stated, the, this case and the associated zoning case were deferred two cycles, owing to some issues that have been resolved, and I'll touch on this more fully when I discuss the zoning case. Subject site is presently designated low-density residential, that's four dense, four dwelling units or less per acre. The applicant, Ellis Road Residential Two LP, requests a designation of low-medium density residential that would raise the density to four to eight units per acre. The intended land use is a townhome community. To the north of the site is recreation and open space. To the east is single-family residential and townhomes. To the south is vacant, a single-family residence and multifamily residential, and to the west, the aforementioned rail corridor and vacant land. As staff concluded in July, when we did the full presentation, the, we find the, the proposal consistent with the four criteria for plan amendments, those being the proposed change would be consistent with intent, the intent, goals, and policies of adopted plans. The proposed change would be compatible with surrounding land uses and future designated land uses. The proposed change would not create substantial adverse impacts in adjacent, in the adjacent area, and the subject site is of adequate shape and size to accommodate the proposed use. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the plan amendment. That concludes my presentation on the plan amendment. We will now move to the next case, the associated zoning case Z sixteen zero zero, zero zero four, and here the applicant is requesting a change from residential suburban twenty to PDR or planned development residential seven-point-five-five. A voluntary annexation petition has been submitted in conjunction with this request. The case is clear of comments at this point, and the applicant and city have agreed to a utility extension agreement. The development plan associated with this request includes the following, following commitments. It will be townhomes to a maximum of one-hundred-and-sixty-five dwelling units. The new commitment in the development plan is that units containing garages shall utilize a decorative garage door design, including but not limited to windows or carriage-style doors. I believe that was a point of contention in July, so they have addressed that. There are four access points on the development plan, there are three preservation areas, and a maximum impervious surface of sixty percent. Text commitment, commitments include widening of Ellis Road from an, for an eastbound turn lane, in continuous three-lane cross-section from Taylor Ridge Drive to the proposed site access number three, four feet of additional asphalt on Ellis Road for accommodation of a bicycle lane, a bus shelter, and design commitments. Staff determined that the proposals meet the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, and should the plan amendment be passed, it would meet the comprehensive plan as well. That concludes my presentation. Thank you very much, I'll shall turn it back over to the board.
Susan, can I get your sign-up sheet? And she came, took it back. Thank you. Okay, we have three people signed up to speak. All is in favor of the project, so I will entertain three minutes each, three and a third minutes each, or roughly four minutes each for each of you to present. Laura Holman?
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Laura Holloman with Spalding and Norris, representing the applicant. Thank you very much for allowing us to come back here this evening, and just a response from the earlier agenda item, sixty days. from the earlier agenda item, sixty days was very helpful, so thank you. We takeaways from the last Planning Commission meeting, as the staff member stated, we were able to work out and finalize the utility extension agreement with the city. That has been done, it is finalized, and it is poised to move forward with rezoning and annexation to city council. So we're all finalized there. The second item on the list was to work with staff to work out a design commitment, speaking to a decorative garage door, and as the staff member stated, we have done that as well. That has been stated and added to our published and finalized development plan, so that has been done as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stephen, William Stevens?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and also members of the commission. My name is William Stevens, seventeen ten Autumn Ridge Drive in Durham, and I've been serving as the pastor of the Southside Church since nineteen eighty-two. We are located on Elmira Avenue, where we also house a private elementary school that provides affordable education to the community. When we purchased the property on Ellis Road, we did so with the intent of developing the twenty-five acres to help meet some of the needs we saw that existed in that community. However, due to reasons beyond our control, we decided to place the property on the market. When we were approached by the builders, we had no idea who they really were. After speaking with representatives of the Harley Company, it became clear that their intent for the property is similar to the vision we had in mind, except for church building and school. I discovered they have a great reputation and what they are doing in that part of the community. They have done projects in Apex as well as Holly Springs, and although we were planning a project different from the one they have in mind, I do believe housing options are important in this area with its close proximity to the RTP. These townhomes will complement the existing residence as well as professional office and campuses nearby. My understanding is, the project is meeting all development requirements by agreeing to everything the city has asked in terms of roadway improvements on Ellis Road as well as utility extensions. In my honest opinion, this will greatly improve that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Isaac Woods? Isaac Woods? Is anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? If not, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do we have commissioners wishing to speak? Do we have commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Gush?
Just quickly, I want to thank you guys for, you know, making the changes and working to finalize your utility extension agreement with the city. I know those were the primary outstanding issues that we had when it was before us two months ago, so I commend your efforts in getting those things resolved, and I plan to vote in favor of this whenever a motion comes available.
Okay, if this, Commissioner Miller?
I have a question, if I may, of the developer, if you could come to the mic, I'd appreciate it. It looks like your building envelope line is co-equal with the railway two hundred foot right of way line. If the railway were to expand in that right of way, is there any plan or anything to provide any kind of planning or buffer on your property to protect your residents from the potentiality of an expanded railway usage inside that right of way?
Sure, I understand your question. We have talked about that, and of course, you know, we delve into that when we get into our level four site plan, but certainly, there is, we believe, some area, some variation where we can provide some sort of buffer for that.
I don't have a lot of experience with railway rights of way, it seems like two hundred feet, a hundred feet is a lot, and I don't know what they're playing, whether they plan to expand the tracks or usage in there, so that was just a concern I had. Then the last question I have, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is I see that you have a potential crossing point for that creek or stream that runs through there. Would you carry roadway over like on a culvert or as a bridge? What have you got in mind for that?
Culvert, yes.
Culvert, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner Bryan?
Please don't leave. Are you planning to have any amenities for the residents of these townhomes?
Yes, there will be some sort of amenity. It may be, you know, a playground area, but it certainly will be a developed amenity feature for the residents.
Because you have no commitment on your development plan for any amenities, so you can state what you just said at a public hearing, but there's no way to enforce it.
No, I mean, you would certainly be able to comment that when we get to site plan and see what's actually before you at that time.
Well, we don't see the site plan.
Right, I understand.
And the pastor said something about, you know, a mixture of housing in the area and everything. Will any affordable housing be part of this development?
No, these will be for sale, market rate townhomes.
No affordable housing?
No.
Thank you.
More comments, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, then I move that we send case A one six quadruple zero three forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Bryan, that we send A one six quadruple zero three to the elected body with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor, please raise the right hand. All those in opposition?
Motion carries thirteen to one.
Okay. And zoning case?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send case Z one six quadruple zero four forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation. And Mr. Medlin, before I finish my motion, this case does go to the city council because it's connected with an annexation? All right, thank you, that we send it forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion by Miller, second by Commissioner Whitley, that we send, I mean, Z one six quadruple zero four forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor, please raise the right hand. All those in opposition?
Motion carries twelve to two.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the election of chair and vice chair for the next year, and according to our bylaws, that's done by the planning director or his designee.
Good evening again, Steve Medlin with the Planning Department. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the chair.
I nominate Commissioner Hyman for chair, second.
Have a motion and second, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous vote that Ms. Hyman has been elected chair.
Vice chair. Vice chair. Vice chair now, elect vice chair.
I understand, I'm not leaving yet. Just picking up my paper. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Busby for vice chair.
Any further nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Busby, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect, that was unanimous vote of Mr. Busby for vice chair, congratulations.
Congratulations to the both of you. The next item on the agenda is new business, and I added the November the eighth. How do the commission want to address that? Do we want to move it out a week?
Well, I want to know what the staff thinks of that.
Yeah, I'd like, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to hear the staff's recommendation, but I would strongly like to not have our meeting on election night, especially while the polls are still open, but I'm open to when we move it.
It is solely the board's decision as to when you want to have the meeting, we just need to know well in advance to ensure that we can secure the venue and also make sure that we do all proper notice according to general statute.
We haven't noticed anything already for that day.
We have not, so at this point, we are, we're two months out, so we have plenty of time to work through the logistics. In terms of preference, obviously, the staff would prefer either a Tuesday or Wednesday night, just simply because it doesn't conflict with other boards and commissions that we may be serving that evening, whether you want to move it to the Wednesday following the election or the following week, certainly, or whatever, it's the discretion of the body.
Commissioner Miller?
I was wondering if anybody on the commission had any strenuous objections to proceeding on the ninth, which is the closest day to our regular schedule. I have in mind that we have continued that one case sixty days with the gracious consent of the developer who wanted thirty, and I thought that one day's delay would be more acceptable to them under the circumstances than a full week.
No problem, motion.
I just wanted to make sure if somebody on the commission really had a strenuous objection that we, okay.
I was just gonna ask if it might be possible to move up a week to like the first and similar to your thought process and shorten in the sixty days a little bit. I don't know if that works for everyone, but.
And so that would be the second?
That would be the?
The first or the?
November first.
The first.
That doesn't cause any problems from the staff perspective to move it up a week? Okay.
If I may, then, Mr. Chairman, I move that we move our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting from November eighth to November first at five thirty in these chambers if they are available, and if they are not available on that day, that we instead have as a ready alternate for the staff to work with, that we move that November eighth meeting to the ninth to these chambers at five thirty P M.
Let me have one motion, you did a compound motion, and I'm not gonna accept that.
Well, I just think that since we are not coming back, and if the staff can't get the chambers, they might like to have two dates to work with, one is a primary and one is a secondary.
So, if I may interject, Mr. Chair, I think it's certainly reasonable for staff to assume that we will be able to find a venue, whether it's this room or another venue within City Hall or even the county building, that would suffice, though we may not be able to broadcast if we don't get this venue, obviously, but we certainly can work to get a proper venue for your meeting on the first.
Under those circumstances, Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion and move that we move our November eighth meeting to November first at a venue that the staff finds for us, five thirty P M.
Second.
Motion and second it, that we move our November meeting from election night to a week earlier, which would be November the first. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please raise the right hand. Those in opposition?
Thirteen to one.
So we had one no vote, right? Johnson, no vote.
Mr. Whitley, I did not get Mr. Johnson's vote.
Yeah, that's no vote, so it was twelve?
Twelve to two.
Okay, so the motion carries, so is there any other new business, whether you have what's coming up next month?
Sadly, I don't really have any of that.
Oh, and where's the staff going? Commissioner Miller?
Mr. Chairman, with Mr. Judge still here, and I think perhaps consistent with where Mr. Whitley was going, with regard to the case sixteen quadruple zero one, the Creekside Commons case, it would be great, I would like to know, in preparation for that case, to know if there are reasonably current traffic counts for Farrington in the area and Ephesus Church Road in the area, to have that information whenever you can make it available between now and the first. And if you foresee a problem with using that information and evaluating this case, tell me what that is, so I'll be armed.
Certainly, right now, the information in the packet is the best information we have available, however, as you probably noticed, it is twenty thirteen data, and generally, by about this time of year, we usually have the twenty fifteen, so we're expecting it any day, so certainly, if we get it between now and the November meeting, we'll update those numbers and those figures, not only for this case, but we do that routinely for every case.
Is it, never mind, thank you very much, Mr. Judge. Susan?
I do have one additional item for new business, and I would like to move to the mic to read a resolution of appreciation for Mr. David Harris. Mr. Harris, if you will join me, please. This is a resolution of appreciation of Mr. David Harris, whereas Mr. David Harris acted as chair of the Durham Planning Commission from September of twenty fourteen through September of twenty sixteen, and whereas the Durham Planning Commission and the citizens and city of Durham and the county of Durham have benefited from the dedicated efforts that he displayed while serving as a member of the Durham Planning Commission, and whereas this commission desires to express its appreciation for the public of a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the Durham Planning Commission, one, that this commission does hereby express its sincere appreciation for the service rendered by Mr. Harris to the citizens of this community, and number two, that the clerk of the commission is hereby directed to spread this resolution in its entirety upon the official minutes of this commission, and this resolution is hereby presented to Mr. Harris as a token of the high esteem held for him, adopted this thirteenth day of September twenty sixteen, and I would just like to say personally to this individual who has sat next to me, I have appreciated all that he has done, his guidance, his leadership, and that it is a rare opportunity that individuals step forward and give their time to the community. It is so much appreciated, and at this time, I know we'd like to hear from Mr. Harris. Thank you.
Thank you, and the chair will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
No, actually, Mr. Chairman, given the date that's been appended to that resolution, I move the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted by this body, and so are we ready for the question? All in favor of this motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and Mr. Harris, we thank you so very much.
And now I move to adjourn.